I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October the 24th, 2023. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street at Granbury, Texas. Today, we are very pleased to have with us Bishop Mark Patton of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to do the invocation. Welcome, Bishop. Please lead us in the invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank Thee for the opportunity to gather as a community and discuss the matters that are of concern. We ask Thee to bless us with Thy Spirit. We bless us. We ask Thee to bless us with wisdom and with grace that we can make wise decisions. We thank Thee for the many blessings we have. We thank Thee for the rain that we've received. And we thank Thee so much for Granbury and for the good people here in this court. And we ask Thee that Thou will help us to have Thy Spirit to be with us. And we say these things humbly in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the pledge to Texas.
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Okay. Today, we have a couple of special presentations here. One is a resolution in support of the State of Israel and the citizens of Israel. And this was actually done by Commissioner Samuelson, taking what was done in the state legislature. So I'll let her read the resolution in support of Israel.
Thank you. On October 7th, 2023, we woke up to the news of Israel, the only democracy in the Middle East, being attacked by terrorists. As Israel stated, this was their 9/11. Hundreds of innocent civilians have been killed and hundreds more taken hostage, including American citizens. I was inspired by the Texas State Legislature passing a resolution in support of Israel and thought every county in Texas should do the same. It starts with Hood. So the resolution. Hood County Commissioners Court, resolution in support of the State of Israel and the citizens of Israel. At a regular meeting of the Hood County Commissioners Court held at the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center, Granbury, Texas, at which a quorum was present, the following resolution was adopted. Whereas Hamas was founded with the stated goal of destroying the State of Israel and has been designated by the United States as a foreign terrorist organization. And whereas the Hamas terrorist organization launched a brutal, highly organized, and unprecedented attack upon Israel and its citizens in the early morning hours of October 7th, 2023. And whereas in its attack, Hamas has killed hundreds of innocent civilians and taken hundreds of Israeli children, women, elderly, and infirm civilians hostage. And whereas in its attack, Hamas has fired thousands of rockets against Israeli population centers in an attempt to kill untold number of innocent civilians. And whereas the level of logistical sophistication demonstrated in the Hamas terrorism operation indicates its receipt of support and funding from the foreign state sponsors of terror, namely Iran. And whereas the timing of this Hamas terrorism operation to coincide with the observance of the Jewish Sabbath and the celebration of Sukkot holiday demonstrates the intent to maximize civilian casualties. Whereas Hamas continues to brazenly locate elements of its terrorist infrastructure in civilian population centers using civilians as human shields. Therefore, be it resolved that the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby reaffirm its support and unwavering commitment to the welfare, security, and survival of the State of Israel and recognize Israel's right to act decisively and unilaterally in defense to protect its citizens and express its support for Israel's right to pursue without interference or condemnation the elimination of Hamas until Hamas is permanently neutralized and public safety assured. And convey its most heartfelt condolences to all Israeli victims as well as their families and communities. And call upon Hood County law enforcement to remain vigilant in protecting Israeli Americans, Jewish Americans, and all supporters of Israel from the acts of crime and unlawful discrimination that tend to manifest at such times. And encourage all other Texas counties to likewise condemn Hamas as well as any official body that refuses to recognize Israel's right to act decisively in self-defense to protect its citizens. And call upon the United States to provide all assistance as may be required to support Israel in its defense against Hamas and all other terrorist organizations. Approved and adopted this 24th day of October, 2023, and to be signed by the Commissioners Court. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
As I move that we approve the resolution in support of the State of Israel and the citizens of Israel, as read.
Second. So motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson, second by County Judge Massengill, to approve and adopt this resolution in support of the State of Israel and the citizens of Israel. Any comment or discussion? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. The next presentation or the announcement should be is that the Hood County Employee Holiday Luncheon is scheduled for Thursday, November the 16th, 2023, from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. It doesn't state where. I guess it's at the... Where is it going to be? At the Cowboy Church again?
Cowboy Church. Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Cowboy Church out on Highway 4. So it's an easy drive down there, and everybody seems to always have a good time and plenty of food. So all the Hood County employees usually turn out in full force at that time. So looking forward to that. The next is the Service Awards, and I see that you've got a number of them.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Welburn, the first one is John Shirley for five years.
Yes, sir. He was unable to attend today, so we will recognize him in November.
Oh, okay. So the second one is Katie Spraberry.
She was unable to attend this morning.
They're working. That's right. Okay. Third, Sissy Freeman. Sissy, you deserve two awards. You've been working for Judge Cotton Howe. This five only felt like 15, didn't it? I understand. I know Cotton Howe well, okay?
I don't have one thing to say. And most people here have heard this, and they think it's an empty platitude, but it's not. Whatever gold sold for in Dubai this morning, this lady and the other two that work in my office are far more valuable to me than that.
Thank you, Judge Howe. The next recipient of a Service Award is Daniel Sweeney.
Yes, sir. We will acknowledge Investigator Sweeney in November.
Oh.
He was unable to attend today.
All right. Next is Patricia Walters.
Yes, sir.
15 years. Now, this lady is a good lady here. This is everybody that comes into the district judge's office. They meet Patricia, and she does a good job, doesn't she, Judge Bufkin?
She does. Patricia is the happy, nice face at the front of our office to deal with very sad and hard situations, and she does a great job. You know, I came in two years ago, kept the same team that Judge Walton had, and they've taught me more about how to run a court, and Patricia is a very big part of that. So we're very thankful for her.
Well, the next Service Award, we saved kind of the best for last, and this is true in this situation. This is an award for the illustrious Becky Kidd for only giving 25 years to Hood County. Only 25 years.
All right. So I'm just going to give a quick speech here. I got appointed in June of 2021, and there's a lot that goes into being district judge. One of them is appointing an auditor, and Becky Kidd had been our auditor. And it was my decision whether I reappoint her. We were in the middle of budget, and of course, I said yes. I'm very thankful that I did. Becky has taught me so much about how government works. And she's been talking to me about retiring, and she said, "I want to reach 25 years in this county." It was a goal of hers. It was something she wanted to do. And so I was so happy that we got to appoint her through the end of the year so that she got to reach 25 years, and I'm so thankful for her service to our county.
I'm going to work with this kid. I got something a little extra special for you here. Becky Kidd has worked with the budget, with me and commissioners for five years now. It's done an outstanding job, and because of her shrewdness and the way that she is conservative and her outlook, this county is in great financial shape. We really are. We're the envy of a lot of the other 254 counties here. And so because of that, is your husband Trig here today?
Here.
I mean, Gary. Where's Gary?
He's over there, and he's not going to come up here.
Trig is Beth. I get these Garys and Trigs. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
You put up with a lot from this. I need to give this award really to you, I guess, instead of this. But this lady here, she's from Wharton County, and Becky Kidd's relatives and my relatives are related to each other. I'm hesitant to say that Becky and I are related to each other because I don't know how that would feel here. I'm getting enough grief as it is. But I love this lady. She's done an excellent job for Hood County if you really have. But a bunch of your friends of Hood County have gotten together, chipped in, and given you this. This is something you're really going to need when you do it. You think you're going to really like this. So I'm not going to tell you what it is, but it's nice.
Do I open it?
Yes. Open.
Nice lock. Very, very nice. Ooh, that's pretty.
Is that yours?
What is it, that?
we commend you for your excellent, outstanding, and dedicated work for the citizens. You are deeply appreciated and will be missed."
Ooh.
How about that?
Very nice.
And now you've got to leave. No, we're going to do one item, take it out of turn. This is item number 13 regarding the library, right?
Yes, sir.
Would you go ahead and talk about it?
Could we move to item number 13? I'm doing this for Jay Riley. I told him I would come up here and talk for him so he could be in Costa Rica. I'd rather be in Costa Rica. No. This is just a minor thing. He is concerned about the budget through the remainder of the fiscal year. He would just like for this expense to come out of capital projects. I don't have any problem with that. That's an easy fix, and that won't hurt his budget.
So the item is actually discuss and take appropriate action for funding to repair the Hood County Library Elevator.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do you know how much it's going to be?
It's over $5,000, and I believe you all have documentation regarding that.
It's 5567.
But I was talking to Glenn, and I mean, I'm fine with doing some kind of vote of where the funding could come from, but we don't have another bid. What were you saying, Glenn?
Yeah, we have... I don't know if we have a service contract or not. I know we pay a similar elevator every month.
I believe that contract is out.
Oh, it is? Okay.
I believe the period is over.
But either way, when the PO comes through, at that time, we'll verify that it's correct. Either they'll get another quote, or they'll come back with a request for a sole source on it. Oftentimes, those elevator companies don't work on other companies' elevators, so... But when the purchase order comes through, it'll be done correct.
Just to clarify, are we voting on awarding this to that person who's quotes on here?
No. You're voting on where the funding's coming from.
Where to pay for it from. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that we're just voting on where the funds are coming from.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comments? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve that the funding for the repair of the Hood County Library Elevator come from capital projects.
Thank you.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson that the funds necessary to repair the Hood County Library Elevator come from capital projects.
Yes, sir.
And second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It carries unanimously, five zero.
Does anyone have any questions for me before I go? Kristen will be here, and she can also reach me by phone. There any questions before I go today?
Okay.
On anything?
On anything.
Okay. Yes, I have two questions that I was going to ask you when we got to the financial part, but let me get to that.
Do you want to reserve him, ask him, Kristi, or are you going to ask her?
It's up to Becky. I can wait and ask Kristen if that's okay with you.
Do you want to do the financials now?
We could. Yeah, let's just go ahead and do financials now, too.
All right.
Okay, so this item number one, let's do them all. On the financial B, consider surfication of payment of invoices for the period of October 4th, 2023 to October 17th, 2023. Discuss vendor payment over $10,000, or stake appropriate action.
So one of the questions that I had was on the payments over $10,000. Just to clarify, and Becky and I have exchanged emails on this. It says Hood County Appraisal District, first quarter payment. It's paying for the fourth quarter of what the appraisal district has sent us, but the reason it's listed as first quarter on here is because it's coming out of our first quarter budget.
That's correct.
So we will receive another bill that will also come out of the first quarter budget for the first quarter of HCADs, which will be around 168.
But we code them where it hits our budget so that we can keep up with it and show four quarterly payments.
Okay. So we'll receive their first quarter payment, which will also be paid out of our first quarter around 168,000.
And their first quarter will be our second quarter.
Oh, it won't be due before the end of the year?
It will be, but it's still going to be second quarter payment. We'll pay four quarters. We've already paid the first quarter of our fiscal year '24.
Okay.
In January or toward the end of December, we will pay the second quarter, which is January, February, March, and then it continues that way through the end of the year.
But this payment, the $216,000, was due before the end of September.
We did not get enough information. They changed their budget a dozen times. I got an email, and I got another email, and then Ms. Meg, I forget her last name. She said, "I sent you an email," and that's the email I was looking for, the one from her. And I never did get one from her. So we've got it all straightened out, and you guys are good to go.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that this is not the new year of the HCAD. This is last year's HCAD payment.
That's correct. They're still on calendar year basis.
Okay. Okay. And then I just wanted to say good news on the sales tax. We got 11 months in on sales tax, and we're at $6.5 million. And so one more month will probably end the year at around $7 million in sales tax collected on an estimate of 4.5. So we'll be at about $2.6 million in excess sales tax at the end of the year that can be applied to debt. And once we're finished paying the debt, then we can apply it to the general fund. So that'll be good.
Well, if you remember, we have budgeted $1.5 million to TCDERS. And since we already have collected that, that EFT will be in the next court, and that will keep you at 98% vested, which is where you guys want to be.
So that'll be... That's good news.
That's fantastic news for your employees.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Any other question or comment? Can we allow Ms. Kidd to leave?
Oh, you have monthly reports to do and approve...
We didn't do the... Yeah, motion. Motion to make the motion to pay the bills for October out of the old budget, $616,285.82, and out of the new budget, $2,188,032.02.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to pay the bills out of the old budget of $616,285.82 and to pay out of the new budget, $2,188,032.2, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is the consider the financial reports received by the Audit Department for the period of October 1st, 2023 to October 15th, 2023, and take appropriate action.
You've all received advanced copies of this information. The Auditor's Office has reviewed and accepted these reports, and we ask you do the same. Oh, I know what yours is. I remember.
Yes.
Thank God I didn't have anything to give you.
Well, sort of did. So just to be transparent, my report was not put in yet because there are some problems with Tyler and auditing, and auditing straightened their part out. But Tyler still has to straighten their part out before the county clerk can input her part. So yeah, so that's why I don't have my report in this month, and I just wanted to be transparent about that.
It was just on the Tyler end with the reporting. It wasn't with our office. We didn't have issues. They weren't able to do the ECR report that we needed in time, and so we're still waiting for county clerk's stuff to be finished. All the other offices, JP4 had finished their part, but just Tyler didn't finish county clerk's part. But no issues with our office.
And you don't foresee any issues?
Not anything.
Okay.
I'm sure this will get rectified, and we'll have Katie's report within a few days.
Okay. Good. Any further comment or discussion? Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve the financial reports received by the Audit Department for the period of October 1st, 2023 to October 15th, 2023.
Second.
Yeah, a motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the financial reports for the period of October 1st, 2023 to October 15th, 2023, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you.
Take your clock. It's nothing attached to a clock. It's just a regular clock, okay?
It's very pretty.
All right. Okay. Next, we have the next thing on the agenda is the citizens' comments at large. And we, as y'all all know, that if you want to speak, you have to fill out a public participation form. And we have three people signed up to speak at the open mic or citizens' comments here today. And the first speaker is Tina Brown.
Good morning. At the last Commissioners Court, there were four things I expected to see on the agenda today. The TCEQ error, the ARPA money, the rules of decorum, and the removal of the concrete slabs. I'm disappointed that nobody put the ARPA money on here. You've had two weeks to decide who you think is most worthy of these funds out of 29 applications you received and how much to give them. I was hoping to see your opinions and a discussion on that today. It's almost November, and we haven't awarded any of this money this calendar year except for salary. So I thought I would just share my opinion on what I think you should do with it. I think we should allocate half this year and half next year because we just never know what might happen. So let's not give it all away this year. There might be more deserving applicants next year based on the economy, et cetera. Could be another tornado or something. We just never know. I personally would like to see all of it allocated to nonprofits. Rancho Brazos, Hood County Substance Abuse, Greater Terrent County Communities and School, and Forward Training, and the YMCA. This money is a grand. I know it is technically taxpayer money, but it's not our county taxpayer money. Our county taxpayer money already funds everyone else who filled out an application except for these nonprofits. They are not funded by the county, and they need this money to help provide for the neediest of our citizens in one way or another. Please keep this in mind, and I hope it will be addressed at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Next is LeAnn McCoy.
You know, it must be important if I'm up here speaking. I wanted to talk to you about the election that is coming or that's happening right now. I have not been able to make my rounds to everyone, so just wanted to kind of get some information out to you. We know that early voting started yesterday with the election being on November 7th. So why am I saying this to you? First, I'd like to kind of explain what a treasurer does. I can't explain everything. There's too many facets that we do. But if you look up the definite or ask Google what a county treasurer is, they will tell you that we're the banker for the county. So what does that mean? The banker for the county is the only elected eyes watching your money come in and watching your money go out. We are the only elected official that does this. Now, with that being said, if there's money going out that we don't agree with, then we can present it to the court, have discussion, talk about it. We are the only people that are the watchdogs for the citizen and the taxpayer. So why am I telling you this? Because on the ballot, Proposition 12 is asking for the abolishment of the Galveston County Treasurer. Why would you do that? Now you're going to try to put an appointed official in or an employee in who is ran by the court. You're taking out the citizen's control. You're taking out the taxpayer's voice if you vote yes. So I'm asking everyone, I'm glad there's more people here now, asking everyone to please So I'm asking everyone, I'm glad there's more people here now, asking everyone to please vote no against Proposition 12. Do not take the taxpayers' eyes out. Don't take the citizens' eyes away from this department. I think it's not a great thing for any county to lose that position. I had a whole better speech, but take it for what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker is Harold Granick.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I'll be brief. Just want to comment what was discussed previously with Becky, who's already gone. But the only financial report of any committee was the county clerk's that was explained, but, and explained because Tyler was late. But apparently, all the other offices were not affected by that. Secondly, to the general public, I want to encourage everybody to go vote because that's what our voice is. Thank you.
Good. That is all of the citizens' comments at large. Did I miss anything today? Has anybody signed up for comment at large? Okay. Well, then next, if you have signed up, if you want to speak on an agenda item, again, you must have filled out a public participation form prior to the agenda item being called. So the first item under the miscellaneous business to be discussed and considered for approval is to discuss and take appropriate action to modify the rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the Hood County Commissioners' Court. This is, was discussed last week. We have a new printed-out version of what is being proposed, and Commissioner Samuelson has headed this up. So Commissioner Samuelson, do you want to start this off?
Yes, thank you, Judge. Again, this stems from the agenda item from two courts ago, which was a discussion only on the pros and cons of Robert's Rules of Order. Those who spoke from the public said the Commissioners' Court should conduct the business of the county, and that all people, court and public, should conduct themselves with decorum and respect, and refrain from insults and personal attacks. After researching the guidance on the Texas Association of Counties, I offered an updated Rules of Decorum at the last court. Honoring the judge's request to have more time to review, the agenda item was tabled. I provided the same documents than I provided last court. However, Commissioner Eagle added one paragraph and a reference at the bottom of paragraph... Drew, can you put the document up, please? At the bottom of paragraph 4F. Since I've already presented and read through the changes that I had proposed, and added the reference to the Texas Association of County guidelines that support these changes at the last court, I'll yield to Commissioner Eagle to discuss his changes at this time.
I just want to address a couple of things that I put in there. Under item F, all I did, excuse me. I had sent down a request to Jim Allison, the, he's not a TAC lawyer, but he does work for TAC. He's got a private practice. But we, we send a lot of our requests for opinions down to Mr. Allison. And I had sent this down to him back in January. If you can see in blue in that first page, I just cited the code. We failed, we didn't do that in the, in the rules. And I'm, the lawyer in me just likes to cite the code that, that is referring to. So that was that change that, that I actually had sent down to have him look at, you know, nearly a year ago, actually. On the second, the next page, if you could go to the next page, Drew?
That's the second page.
The third page, then, the next page. Number five was also added, and we discussed, I discussed this with Mr. Allison, and he, I think he put it out there on the Safe Serve. Is that correct? Anyway, he put it out there also for all the counties to see. There's a website that, or a place where people can go, that our commissioners could look at what other commissioners are doing. But this is basically, number five is the 180-degree difference to the last one that, that Ms. Samuelson put on at the end of this. And it's just basically saying that if somebody comes up here and the, and the presiding officer decides to go for a sanction, that it's subject to being, it's subject to being questioned. That's all that is. And it's, it's the same as the, it's the opposite, or the, the flip side of the last one that Ms. Samuelson put on, on the last page. That's all. These, and by the way, these are taken, I will say that the, the, the stuff that I sent to Mr. Allison back in last January, he came back with a, with an email and just said that, because the question was, can we, is it proper to, for a Commissioners' Court to adopt Robert's Rules? And it is. It's, it's, if you want to. And so, you know, we put that on the agenda a few weeks ago and talked about it just for discussion. And to me, these, these little changes are actually verbalizing, I think, what the rules of decorum say in the first place, but it's, it's just kind of restating those. So it's something kind of in between Robert's Rules and what we've already, what's recommended by Texas Association of Counties.
Okay. Anything else, and the Commissioners? If not, we've got some speakers lined up to speak on this. And the first speaker is Tina Brown.
So one of my suggestions last week, or last Commissioners' Court, was maybe cellphone usage. I see you put that in here, but it's not very clear. I would, in my opinion, I would like to see the five of you and the county clerk not use their cellphone at all unless permission is granted, in case you have to pull something up for the court, because that way we know that you were concentrating on us and not doing, and not texting, emailing, or playing games on our time. Number nine, I really don't really understand why that's in there. We have filling out a participation form and submitting to the county clerk is already listed on four and eight. You just have put language in there that says that once your name is called, you shall speak or pass, and you can't speak again. But oftentimes, you ask someone for more information. So is that going to be taken away from you? You're not going to ask for more information if you want it? Obviously, if more information is wanted, you should, why would you put this in here? If someone happens to step out of the court to take an important call or go to the restroom, they're just out of luck and don't get to speak on the agenda item? I just think we're being too nitpicky on here. It just seems like this is all unnecessary and maybe a power grab. Number five and number nine seem somewhat the same. I spoke at this at the last court and asked you to rethink the whole thing, because in my opinion, this will just cause more division, more chaos, and more issues, since this is a 3-2 court. Just remind yourself that the court will not always be this 3-2, and next time, you might be on the short side. This also only pertains to the public and not to any of you. This is a blatant act of control over this court. If you wanted to be the judge, I suggest you run for the position. If the presiding officer, the judge, calls someone out of order, his speaking time should stop, and that person should listen to the judge. Oftentimes, that does not happen. If they do not, they should lose their time and sit down, and if needed, escorted out of the courtroom. And the rest of you should support that effort, and if you disagree, bring it up at the next court. We have to have decorum, and the judge is the presiding officer. But if you decide to leave this in here, please combine them and put it at, and put it after your number eight, because seven and eight are outlining who the presiding officer is. So you're actually saying the presiding officer, before you've ever, ever put it in here, who the presiding officer is. I also don't think public meetings is addressed well in this document, and not sure why we have to fill out a participation form to participate in a public meeting. We do need proper decorum, but we shouldn't have to sign up to speak in a public meeting. All comments should be welcome. Thank you.
Next is Richard House.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. First of all, I want to start by thanking Commissioner Samuelson for going beyond talking on this topic and doing the hard work of the research and proposing changes. It's always the extra effort that makes the difference. I, I split these changes into two categories. The two in red are, to me, guidelines to members of the public. And for people who come maybe once a year or once every five years to court to speak, it's truly helpful to have those guidelines, to know what is expected and what decorum is in the court. And I'm totally in favor of those. The two in blue have to do with overriding the initial decision of the presiding officer of the court. And at first, I was concerned about that, because on a divided court, that could only make the division even worse. But I reflected upon my, my many decades of being a manager in a Fortune 100 company. And what I recalled is, I and everyone else views comments in the world through the lens of our experiences. And we don't all view things the same way. We don't hear things the same way. And it's entirely possible that the presiding officer, be it the judge or one of the commissioners, would see something differently than the court as a whole, just because of that previous life experience. These amendments give the court, in hopefully the rare circumstance where the court disagrees with the presiding officer, the chance to have a consensus opinion, much like an appellate court does, and to move the process forward quickly and resolve it in that meeting, and either tell the, the speaker to, that they're out of bounds or to let them continue. So I'm in favor of these changes. And again, Commissioner Samuelson, thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Nanette, thank you for putting this on the agenda, and Dave, thank you for your contributions to this. Anything, any steps that this court can take to foster an environment where we can disagree without being disagreeable, I think is a good thing. And anything we can do to rein in people that like to come to the podium and talk about events and personnel that have nothing to do with Hood County, other than being a resident? Stuff like that, I think, needs to stop, and I wholeheartedly approve of the measures to override the presiding officer, should he not fulfill his duties in presiding over this meeting, as we have seen on numerous occasions. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Dr. Harold Granick.
Yes, again, thank you, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you, Nanette, for putting this on. Respect to decorum, I think that largely, in the many years I've been coming to this court, only one person I can remember violated that decorum, and that's improved. That's been the exception. Largely, the rules that we have seem to have worked. And my view is, although this is not horrible, but seems more to suppress, if there's criticism, there was, Commissioner Eagle said that one of the best things he did was put on the open mic, and when Nanette came on, she put it on for not just once, but each meeting. That seemed to have worked well and allowed public speaking. These rules give me the impression of more to suppress that kind of open speaking, because some people have been critical of some of the actions. My view is, if it's not broken, don't try to fix it. And the way we've operated so far seems to have worked really well. I suggest that we, y'all not vote for this, but keep the rules that we have in the past and continue to do that, and people be respectful and preserve the decorum that they've shown in the past. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the comments to item number one under Ms. Lightness. Did somebody else fill out a participation form that didn't get called? If not, does anybody else have anything to add to the discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to pitch in here. I've sat here for, you know, going on three years, and I've seen some horrible things come out of that podium. I've seen personal, or private citizens in this county attacked. I'm not talking about public officials, but private citizens out there attacked. I've seen a character questioned and assassinated from that podium. I've seen political stump. That's not what this is about. And I am absolutely 100% and have been since the day that I took this seat, supportive of the general public coming up and expressing their viewpoints, and quite frankly criticizing. If we have done something as a county, that's, that's in these rules of procedure, that this is not to take away criticism of the job that I've done. If you have something to say to me, you're welcome to come up here and say it. But it's not okay for somebody to come up here and attack a private citizen out there, or to assassinate somebody's character and question their motives. Stick to the facts. Let's rein this thing in. I think that this shows everybody how this field is striped, and it puts a framework of rules in here that we can all work within, and return this thing to some civility and stay on point with doing county business.
Thing else? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Judge, I'll make the motion to adopt the rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the Hood County Commissioners' Court as presented today.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to adopt the rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum that was presented and attached at the meeting today, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment, questions regarding it? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay. So I guess the, the county is what, 4-1? Is that correct? So the, is that right?
Yes.
So the motion carries 4-1. The next item, discuss and take appropriate action to authorize a county judge to sign the resolution approving the county grant program year 2024 for the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for the Hood County Senior Citizen. And we have Jeanette Scott, and escorted by Sheriff Deeds here, who's the president of that organization. So Ms. Scott, the floor is yours.
The Texas Department of Agriculture offers the Texas Feeding Texans Grant every year that we apply for every year. This gives us some funding for senior citizens who don't qualify for the Title III meals through North Texas Council of Governments. So this is just another funding source for the home-delivered meals that we do. And we are applying, again, this year. This resolution is part of their application process and due November 1st. So we are requesting that you sign the resolution, and we will submit it with our application to the Texas Department of Agriculture.
Okay. Sheriff, do you have anything to sign?
For, I've been on the board for quite a few years, more than I can remember. But anyway, for that period of time, and way back as far as I can remember, this has been signed off every year by the court. We sure need all the help we can get to help take care of the seniors, seniors out there. I know I am one, so. But, so I sure appreciate it if you'd help by signing this, approving it, and getting it signed, so we can keep the thing going.
Right now, we're serving 290 meals a day, home-delivered. And those are, you know, all delivered by volunteers. So we have quite a large crew of volunteers that go to everybody's home every day and provide them a hot meal. And then we also serve meals at the senior center. And those meals, as you can see, I gave you our latest status report that includes our 2023 meals. The congregant meals have jumped up 4,000 meals this year. So we have more people coming to the senior center and... this year. So we have more people coming to the senior center, and we sit down, eat lunch with them. The other day, one guy was counting out his points for his lunch because he's on Weight Watchers. And he said he always can come to the senior center and stay within his bounds. And I said, well, it's because of portion control.
Yeah.
We serve a good meal, and we have what the portions you're supposed to eat, which is healthy for our seniors.
Well, I know that the five years that I've been here, that the county has always contributed. I think it's always been 75,000, maybe one year it was 50,000, and I think that was the COVID year or something like that. But we have to contribute, the county has to contribute in order for the Texas Feeding Texans to kick in, to get that grant.
Yes.
And that grant pays about $589,000. Am I right on that?
That's the grant we get from North Texas Council of Governments.
Okay.
Texas Feeding Texans is a smaller grant because it's kind of the stopgap of covering people who may be not qualified for the other grant, but they might have, they might be under 60 and not quite there yet. We get a lot of calls from people who are 55 and disabled, and this grant will cover those people.
Okay. Well, but in looking at everything, with the Title III, $589,000 that the senior citizens get, the $75,000 from Hood County, and then United Way kicks in additional $17,000, and then the city donates $32,000 providing of all the utilities
Yes.
out there. So with all of that money together, the senior citizen program still comes up about $10,000 a month short.
Yes.
Run a negative balance. And that's to the tune of about $150,000 a year. Am I right?
Correct.
It's just that, I think I read a statistics the other day that it takes 21% more money to support a family today than it did when Trump left office. That is, the food cost, inflation, that's just what it does. And there are more people that are out there that are hungry. It just comes down to the fact that the reserves that the senior citizen has, how much reserves do you have right now left, Jeanette?
Not a lot. We had gotten a nice grant six years ago when I started, and we were able to not touch those reserves since. But after COVID, the climate has changed a lot. Food prices are quite higher, and so we have had to use our reserves. And we're still working on using down the reserves.
Well, that's what I mean. So that this money here that the county has given to the senior citizens every year of $75,000 is money that is very much needed by the senior citizens to keep on operating.
Yes.
And y'all feeding a lot more people now than you were a year ago.
Yes, we are. And we have, we're anticipating quite a few more. COG has given us a projection that in the next 10 years, we can anticipate the number of seniors that will be serving will go up 45%.
God. It just, it's unbearable. So the resolution that we're asking to sign is for the county to give another $75,000 to the senior citizens again this year?
That it's for TDA to be assured from the county that they have done that.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we've already done that, Judge.
Yeah. And then at the end of the year, they require the auditor to send in an affidavit saying they did indeed pay that.
I want to step in and thank you for answering all my questions.
Sure.
So when I read this resolution, it jumped out at me that it said the county was certifying, the county has approved the organization's accounting system and fiscal agent, or the fiscal agent. And then down at the bottom, Section 3, it says the county hereby certifies that it has approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent, which meets financial management system requirements as set forth in the Texas Grant Management Standards promulgated by the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. So that seemed pretty heavy as far as what our responsibility was to authorize the judge to sign this. And so I did a lot of questioning yesterday and asking, how do we do that? And thank you so much for, like, in an instant responding with the audit from your outside auditing firm, which I forwarded to Ms. Kidd, and she has reviewed it. I also talked to Texas Department of Agriculture, and they said that they do audits regularly and that your organization is at very low risk because of the good work that you're doing. So I would just, as a, for, maybe a feedback would be when either Sheriff Deeds or you get that audit at the beginning of the year after they're finished, if you would forward that to our auditor, audit department, so that they can have it on file and
Okay.
and know that it's, that, you know, everything's good, so that when we get this, we know that we're in good shape to be able to rely on your financial system. So thank you again for
Thank you.
your quick response.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
It's a move that we authorize the county judge to sign the resolution approving the county grant program for year 2024 to the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Feeding Texans, and the Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for Hood County Senior Center.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to authorize the county judge to sign the resolution approving the county grant program year 2024 for the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texans, Feeding Texans, the Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for the Hood County Senior Citizen, Senior Center, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, the next item, consider and take appropriate action to extend the current Hood County burn ban, put into effect July 25, 2023. Well, as always, it almost worked out. By the time we put the burn ban in, it's going to expire, we get a little rain.
Get a little rain.
But not enough.
Not enough. Our last rain we had was pretty nice to have, but it did still bring our numbers down low enough. And today, we're still at 585. So we're well above the threshold to keep the burn ban.
So it's your recommendation that we keep the burn ban?
The burn ban. And then if we do get significant amount of rain by first of the week, we look at the numbers from the Forest Service and the drought index, and if it comes down, we can always lift it. So.
I'd rather keep that threat of the burden ban up here. Maybe we get a lot more rain tomorrow and Thursday, too, than next week. We can always, it's always easy to call a meeting and take the burn ban off. I know that.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any question or comment? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion that we extend the current Hood County burn ban put into effect July 25, 2023 for 90 days.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to extend the current Hood County burn ban Second. for 90, additional 90 days, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess you're going to stay up here next, aren't you? Discuss and take appropriate action to determine source of funding for the pump repairs to the county-owned PPVF tanker for the amount of $14,632.89. What do you got there?
Well, you want me to start it?
Go ahead.
Okay. So this is a county-owned truck, and it is currently out of service because the pump is out. Pecan Fire, Volunteer Fire Department came to me and asked about funding. And when I reviewed the interlocal agreement, it states the subsidy funds should be used for operational maintenance and fuel budget. The question is, is a major repair like the pump considered maintenance? I think the court should give all the VFDs some guidance on what the intent is. Does a court expect all expenses to be paid out of the subsidy? And then if the subsidy runs low, they would be expected to come back to court. Of course, our auditor gets monthly reports, so she'd be able to let us know if there was any VFD that was looking like they were running low on funds ahead of time. Or is the court's intent that maintenance means routine maintenance? And major repairs on county-owned vehicles would come to court to be approved for repair out of capital. Whichever we agree the intent is, we may consider amending the interlocal agreement to clarify what is maintenance. So that's why it's on here. I just wanted to open it up to discussion so that we could agree on what that is. I've talked a little bit to Matt Mills, and he may have an opinion. So if we would like that, we can get that, too. So
Yeah.
fire guy, so what do you say?
Well, you know, my thought has always been that that's, those larger, larger ticket items on a county, county-owned vehicle, that's our capital that we're taking care of there to make sure that that's part of our agreement as we give those to the fire departments to do what they need to do in those emergencies. Something like shelling a pump for 15 grand eats into the budget a whole lot. And I think that that's, being county equipment, that's not maintenance. That's a, that's a repair on a, on a system's failure, and it's, it's pretty critical. I would hate to put that kind of a thing on the individual fire departments. I think the maintenance budget needs to go for the smaller items, the things that you're anticipating fixing. If it's a small, you know, break a mirror off, that kind of thing. Yeah, go ahead and fix those things. But a $15,000 item, I think, needs to, needs to come out of capital.
I know originally when Jeff got the 115,000 for each fire, each fire department for, you know, for, for maintenance issues, it was going to be for, for repair of everything. And then when the, when they ran out of money or needed money, then, then, you know, significant amounts like this, you know, that can be brought to the court. So it's totally up to what the court wants to do as far as how they want to pay for this.
Do I hear a motion?
No further comments from any of the other commissioners or judge?
You talked about Fund 55. I mean, where are you coming out of?
Well, that, that would be, if it's not coming out of their subsidy, then yeah, it would come out of Fund 55 as a capital expense. But is that, is that the expectation that the contract that we, the interlocal agreement that we have with the volunteer fire departments is for routine maintenance? And should we clarify that and have an amendment in the contract or in the interlocal agreement that says maintenance and define it, that maintenance is routine, repairs under X amount of dollars?
Well, one of the things is that, that budget was about $10,000 per department for the maintenance and repairs before it just got put in with the subsidy. So, and this is well over and above that. My, you know, again, my thought on that was that's a, that's a big, that's a big hit. And, and some of these guys are running pretty tight on these budgets. And that larger ticket item, again, you know, a smaller item, and I don't know where we differentiate on that, you know, you may have five, $5,000 things come up one year, and, and that, that changes the math on all of that. But I think a $15,000 hit on a, on a county-owned vehicle, this is, you know, again, it's county, county vehicle, and it's not any failure on their part. It's just a part broke. And I think to make them whole and put them back, put them back to serving the people, we need to go.
Yeah, I have to, I agree with Commissioner Andrews on that. You know, this, this just needs to be a case-by-case deal, and we need to fix this, in my opinion.
I agree that, you know, that since it is a county-owned piece of equipment, you know, that falls back, you know, to, for the county to pick up the tab to repair this at this point, because it's in the county's best interest. I know that particular truck was probably utilized Saturday, you know, on a, no, Sunday, rather, on a, on a incident. And, you know, I know all the other tank, several other tankers went out on that particular call, too. So, but yes, it needs to be, you know, I would say, in fact, I'll make the motion that we approve the, you know, payment of $14,632.89 out of Fund 55.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the payment of $14,632.89 out of Fund 55, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Good. Okay. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action regarding office space for Constable John Shirley, Precinct 2. I put this on the docket because Constable Shirley has had an office up on the third floor of the historic county courthouse. We found out here recently, dealing with the bronze statutes, that you have to have permission from the State Historical Association to do anything, not only with the courthouse, but out with the grounds extended into the street. We never had anything approving this office up there. And I understand from the sheriff that Constable Shirley has moved back into the Justice Center. And is that, has he fully moved into the Justice Center? I was hoping he was going to be here today since he was scheduled to get an award.
Yes.
But has he moved totally into the Justice Center? Okay.
His name's on the door and
Well, if that's the case, then I think that every constable, the other three constables, let's say, in, in the county, only have one office. Isn't that, am I correct in that? I think I'm correct in that. There's only one office. So I want to make sure that Constable Shirley has removed his equipment, his everything, the lock on the door, so that if not, I'm going to contact the State Historical Association, because they have been working well with the county. And it's coming up on a later item here about extending the deadline for removing the concrete pads here. And I don't want to run afoul of the Texas Historical Commission. So that office up there needs to be cleaned out, the lock removed from the door on the deal. Do you know if that's been done, Commissioner Andrews?
I mean, I didn't know that, no one reached out to me or Constable Shirley before this was on the agenda. So I wasn't exactly sure what this was about until you just
Well, that's
mentioned it. So
No, that's what it's about.
Okay.
It's about that.
He is not in town today. He's with his wife, getting her, one of her cancer treatments. So when he gets back, I will make sure that he's, everything's removed from, well, I mean, he's an elected official. I can't make sure of it. But, you know, I'll ask him if, if he could please ensure that all of his belongings are removed from
Okay.
the historical courthouse. But yes, he's, you know, he's, official office is in the Justice Center next to JP2. That's where his mail will go and any other official correspondence. And he's there to support JP2 as bailiff. But, you know, he does, he, as everyone knows, when you're a constable, you're not necessarily always in your office. You're out serving papers all around the county. So he does have a laptop, and he can, if he needs to do work in the car or in another county office with his laptop, I don't have an issue with that. I kind of do that myself. I call it have laptop, will travel. And many of you have seen me in the ELC with my laptop working if I have a meeting there. So that's, I don't really see an issue with, with him having a laptop and going from a count, you know, temporarily in the business world, they call it hoteling. You, you know, take your laptop and you go somewhere and you work for a while. If that's convenient for him and his constituents, then, then that helps him serve the people better. I do not have a problem with that. So.
Okay. Well, that brings you to my next question about saying that there is rumors that he was going to set up a satellite office of some type down at the Acton Annex. Have you heard anything about that?
That's what I'm talking about. If he has a need to meet with a constituent, as you're aware, there was, Krista Lash was in the office in front of me, and she moved last year when the court admin, when it resigned. I don't recall that being on an agenda for her to move, but she, she moved. And now that left the office in front of me open. And now that left the office in front of me open. So I believe he has requested to have his administrative assistant that was approved by this court to be housed there. That's his prerogative, especially given the events of last week. I think it's a really good idea for me to have a law enforcement presence there and someone else in the office with me. So I don't have a problem with his admin officing in the empty office next to me. I don't, if he wants to come in there with his laptop and if he's out on that side of his precinct and he needs to stop in and do some work on his computer, I mean, he could go to Starbucks and do it, I guess, but I would rather him come and, you know, sit there and do the work he needs to. But as I said, his official office, all his mail, he's there at JP Two. And that's where he'll spend the most of his time when he's, when he's working in the office and not out on the road doing what constables do.
Well, you never did mention the Acton office until I brought it up specifically.
Well, it was coming. I have it written in my notes.
My point is, is that the Commissioners' Court is the one to decide what office space is used by elected and county officials. Okay? None of the other constables have but one office space. Am I, if I'm wrong on that, I'd like to know that on the thing.
Well, I got...
Is there any constables out here?
So are you saying that he can't use his, to take his laptop and go somewhere else in the county and work if he needs to?
I hope he works all the time. I don't, I see his numbers up here.
He is.
He's the lowest in the county. My point is, I would like him to work as much as he possibly can. Don't have an objection to it. But taking up and using a vacant office out there that somebody else may be wanting to use, we have requests all the time for vacant office space. One came up the other day, I forgot what it was, something about looking for a different office space. I don't know if it's a good idea to start saying that constables are allowed to have two offices here in the county.
He doesn't have two offices.
And actually, I'm opposed to it because as far as my knowledge is, that has never happened before. Constable has one office.
He has one office. He's just, like I said, hoteling. He could use his laptop to go to, sit at the ELC, sit at, you know, wherever he is, you know, this is a large county, right? And if he happens to be somewhere on one...
Not anything, you look, hoteling in a vacant office is not what I'm talking about. I'm objecting to that. I think that a vacant office is something that we can use to possibly put somebody else in.
Well, we are.
He's got an office, he can work, that's great. You said work at Starbucks, work at another office, come into your office? I don't have a problem with that. Don't see anything wrong with that.
Okay.
Don't have a problem with that. But occupying a vacant office?
He is not.
I do have a problem with that.
Okay, well, he's not doing that, so we can move on.
All right, let's put it to a vote then.
So with that, I will move to confirm Constable Shirley's right as an elected official in the state of Texas to choose the office space that best suits the needs of his office, of his staff, and constituents, like all other elected officials.
I'll second that.
Well, that's vague in that how many places does he get to do that? In one place or more than one place?
All right, let me throw something in here since we're going to make a deal, a big deal out of this. First of all, this is moot since he's moving. He's going to be available over here at the Justice Center to be there for court when the JP over here has court. And whatever else he needs to do, his office is officially back over here, which, by the way, the judge advocated for that from the get-go. Number two is the...
I advocated for what? I take homage with that.
For him to be at...
I never advocated for him to move into the third floor of the Justice Center.
That's not what I said. I said over here. And since you mentioned the Justice Center, we can use the, well, excuse me, the courthouse. Let's go back to that. The courthouse can be, the offices can be used at that courthouse without getting permission from the Historical Commission, as long as they're being used for office space. So that doesn't even need to happen in the first place. But the second place is, yes, it was being advocated by those going, disagreeing with Mr. Shirley, to have him come back over here. Well, he's back over here now. And if his assistant is over at the other annex as an aide to Commissioner Samuelson after she was almost attacked last week by a citizen who went in there and threatened her, then I'm all in favor of her having somebody there in her office with her. And if it's going to be Mr. Shirley's assistant, then that's fine with me. If we need to put that for a vote today, we can absolutely do that.
Well, and I think one of the questions here is, you've got a constable and an admin, and each of them need an office. Do they have to be in the same place and the same suite? And I would dare say no. If it's, you know, a security issue to have his administrative assistant out there in Acton Annex and to have his office over here in a little bit cramped quarters here with an additional admin in here, I don't see any problem in having them in two different places. It's two offices under one elected official where they are. I don't see that that's incredibly relevant as long as we've got the space and can make that work.
That's all I'm trying to say. I'm just trying to clarify, if another constable comes up here and says, you know, I'd like to put me a satellite office where I can put somebody else or reserve deputy, one of my deputies, at another place here in the county at another location. So is the Commissioners' Court going to be okay with that?
I don't know what you mean by a satellite office.
Who what?
What are you, what is the definition of a satellite office?
The one, the vacant office that he and/or his assistant is occupying at the Acton Annex.
That's, you've met the assistant, right? She's been training next to you?
I like her very much. I've met her. She's been training in Constable Four. Name is Mary, as I have met her.
Mary, yes, so that's where she is. That's not a satellite office for Constable Shirley, that's his assistant's office. So I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Yeah, me either.
The, you know, my opinion is that the, you know, Constable Shirley's clerk should be in the same office he is for continuity between, you know, him and the clerk. Period.
That's what I'm talking about. You've got him in one office and her in Acton. If his office is here at the Justice Center, I know the previous constable for Precinct Two, he and his staff was at the Justice Center. And then because of some squabble that Commissioner...
I'm not saying that there's already a motion on the table. There's a motion on the table.
I'm not finished. Because of a squabble that Constable Shirley got into, he wanted to move his office to the third floor of the Hood County courthouse. It was never sanctioned by the Commissioners' Court. It was never voted upon. And I think that, contrary to what Commissioner Eagle says, I think that is violation of the easement with the State Historical Association. And I don't want to get the State Historical Association back up here. But if he doesn't remove his stuff and doesn't vacate that office, I will contact him and have him come up there and just make sure that it is. Because I'm not going to be in violation of any contract or covenant that we do have with the State Historical Association. So if he gets his office out of the third floor of the historical courthouse and is down here at the Justice Center, fine. Now, if you're saying that you want him to also be able to have the right to establish a satellite office, a office for his administrative assistant or anything in the Acton Annex, I'm not going to vote for that. Because I think all constables should have one office where they and their assistants work out of for the continuity. That's what I'm saying. Because if you're not, you may have other constables that have a bigger area than he does come up here and says, well, you did it for Constable Shirley. I want an office in Toler. You got an office in Toler, Commissioner Andrews, that we could have? Somebody, a constable, come out there and do that?
I don't see any space there, but I do see it in Acton, so.
Okay, well, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, so the motion...
There is a constable in the Acton Annex property already.
Yes, and there's a separate space for his admin. I mean, it's a suite, so the admin has area and he has an area. And now, so I don't see that there's any difference. And as I said, there's a motion on the table to affirm Constable Shirley's right to, as an elected official in the state of Texas, to choose the office space that best suits the needs of his office, office staff, and constituents, like any other elected official. Additionally, I would like to call on the judge to refrain from his continued harassment of one elected official during official proceedings. That's my motion.
I didn't get the second part of your motion, the harassment of...
You heard me. I'm not going to repeat it.
I did not hear it.
Said, I call on the county judge to refrain from his unnecessary continued harassment of the constable in my precinct.
I'll second that motion.
Official proceedings.
Well, I think we already have a motion and a second on the table.
Well, we got to get, I don't know why we keep rehashing it. We got a motion and a second on the table. We've had it on there. I appreciate calling the vote, Judge.
Okay, I call the vote as stated, that he could have, what is your vote? Would you restate your motion again, Constable? I mean, Commissioner Samuelson?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Constable Shirley's right as an elected official in the state of Texas to choose the office space that best suits the needs of his office, office staff, and for his constituents, like all other elected officials.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? I think that's too vague. I think that he's allowed to choose, well, I don't think he's allowed to choose. I think that Commissioners' Court is the one that assigns the office space to a constable. And the office space that's been assigned to that constable to is here in the Justice Center next to JP Two, which is where he should be, his office and his staff should be. So I am against that motion because it's open-ended. That allows him to establish four or five at his home or at the Acton Annex, or how many places we're going to give him? How many places we're going to give any other constable?
Please call the vote. Quit your gaslighting.
Wait a minute, we're going to have some discussion.
That's my discussion on the deal.
Now that I'm going to have some discussion.
Okay, you're next, Mr. Wilson.
Last year, because certain Commissioners on this court made it real clear they didn't think that the Commissioners' Court needed an admin, that admin left, at that point, that position was terminated. So therefore, the county Commissioners have no admin. What I see coming up with Mr. Constable Shirley's clerk going in that front office, she becomes Lynette's admin. That's my position. We don't need, you know, an admin out there just for her benefit.
That is not what, that's your assumption, and that's an invalid assumption. We have had no discussions about this. This is Constable Shirley's admin who has, he's been denied an admin for, what, three years? As every other constable has an admin. As I've said before, during budget season, the taxpayers in Precinct Two are paying the same level taxes as every other taxpayer in the county, yet they were not given the same level of service with their admins as every other precinct. Precinct Two has been denied the service of allowing our constable to do the best job he can do because he's doing the work himself and of what an admin would do. Yes, thank you, Constable Four, for allowing Patricia to use part of her time to help Constable Shirley, but he does, he needs a full-time admin, just like every other constable. And that's what she'll be doing. And I resent Commissioner Wilson's assumption.
Well, Mr. Mills, I would like for you to give us a legal opinion as to whether that motion that gives a constable the right to establish his office anywhere he wants to be in the county, without regard to how many offices. He may want three offices somewhere in the county.
Right, I think it's too, I think it's too vague. I would rather you reword it. Because the way it was worded, what if he wants the office where the county attorney is office? And he comes in and says, hey, Matt, get out of here. I mean, we've kind of given a green light to do that with the way you phrased it. Now, I mean, if your motion is, you know, to use an office space in Acton Annex and an office space in the Justice Center, that's more appropriate to get to the point. I don't want to leave it open-ended where...
Okay, just to get, just to shorten this and stop, you know, this going on with this time for this subject that is unnecessary, I will make the motion, first I'll withdraw my previous motion. And I'll make the motion that Constable Shirley's office is in the Justice Center and his admin will office out of Annex Two.
Second.
Annex Two?
I'm sorry, the Acton Annex, thank you.
Second.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever annex it is. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
In your opinion, is that legal for a constable or the Commissioners' Court to allow a constable to have two offices in the county?
Well, it's legal. I'm sure like in Harris County, they probably have eight or 10. I mean, I don't know, but...
Well, I'm not talking about Harris County. I'm talking about little Hood County here.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any illegality. It's just a policy question of whether you want to put them like it was years ago where they were in the Justice Center or whether you want to split it out. I mean, that's your call, in my opinion.
No, I think he belongs in the Justice Center. I've been saying that for years. That's where he should be. But I'm not saying that he should be allowed a satellite office, if you will, or an office where his clerk should be in another office and away from the court and away from him in another office. Are you saying that that is okay?
Well, I do understand your concern, Judge. I just think that that's a policy question. And, I mean, you can have an opinion that you don't like that and think that's a bad idea and vote against it, but I don't think it's illegal to have, you know, in a different location, an admin.
We've spent a lot of time on this. And, you know, we had a discussion a few weeks ago about the Development Director and the Constable Three changing jobs and, or changing offices. And that's actually costing some money because there's walls being broken out. And we didn't have this long of a discussion about that. I have an empty space. As I said, I would, it would be nice to have somebody else there. She's not my admin, so please stop with that rhetoric. And let's move on. There's a motion on the table and a second.
Okay. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So we got, you vote yea?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Andrews, Commissioner Samuelson, and Commissioner Eagle all voted yea. Commissioner Wilson, County Judge Massengill voted nay. All right, this brings us to...
Precinct Two, it doesn't matter at all. Sorry, that's out of order. Out of order.
Keep it up.
I didn't hear what she said.
It's irrelevant. It was un, out of order, shouldn't have been, that's why we changed the rules at decorum.
You're out of order, okay? I just said, what did she say? I don't know what she said. All right, consider and take appropriate action to award RFP 2023-09 firetruck maintenance. We've got Mr. Glenn Tillman, Mr. Stafford.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. RFP 2023-07 firetruck maintenance closed October 6th at 10:00 a.m. We had two qualified bidders and purchasing in the Fire Marshal's Office would recommend awarding the contract to Emergency Apparatus Services.
Any questions, comments? Okay, do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve the award of RFP 2023-07 firetruck maintenance as stated by the purchasing director.
Second. Okay, motion been made by Bishop Wilson to award RFP 2023-07 firetruck maintenance pursuant to the purchasing. Mr. Glenn Tillman, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action regarding three bids for the demolition and removal of the slab foundations of Silent, Prey and Black Star and preparation for resaw to be done by the county facility maintenance. The.
Not here.
I have, nobody's here, Jay's not here on the thing. We got the ruling from the State Historical Commission that this slab should be taken up by November the 15th. Because of the bidding process, we could not get the three bids in time. Because of all of the activities for Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, I wrote the executive director of the State Historical Commission and asked him if we could please have that deadline extended until January the 15th of 2024. They graciously said that we could, so that we are extending that and we have until January the 15th to do that. So I'm just more or less giving you that and we don't have the bids yet to do that. But we're not under the gun like we were because they, the State Historical Association agreed to extend the deal. So we can, that is not need to have any action right now.
We do have the bids. We just, so the lowest one is 5,500, but that doesn't include the purchase and laying of the sod.
Well, I'd like to table it until Jay Riley gets back because he's going to also be retiring at the end of the year. And I don't know if he's going to come back and resaw it himself or whether they're going to have whoever they're going to do. So I'd rather just table that until he comes back because we do have the time.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion. Second. A motion been made by County Judge to table item number seven until Jay Riley returns, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to table is unanimous, five zero. Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action to approve adjusting the Commissioners Court's schedule regarding the Auditor's Office items deadline for invoices and line item transfers follows. November the 17th, 2023 at noon for the 20, November 28, 23 Commissioners Court and June 28, 2024 at noon for the July 9, 2024. That's a typographical era there for it has 23. That's just because of the holiday season and getting appropriate number of times. Do I hear a motion?
This isn't, you know, this involves a lot of people in the county. Is that going to be a burden to shorten that timeframe? Would it be appropriate to maybe make it the 20th or at 5:00 on the 17th? I just don't want to cut anyone short from being able to get their work in.
So right now, the items are due in our office by noon on ev, on the cutoff on each court. This allows us to be able to process because it takes a long time for us to be able to close court. And then we also have to get the items to the judge by that following morning. I mean, if everyone knows in advance that that's our cutoff, then I don't, I don't see why it would be an issue.
Changing it to the 17th is, I mean, it's one, two, three, not counting the two holidays, four days before court. Okay, I just don't want to put any pressure on all of the people that have to get their information to you. And, you know, I haven't heard from anybody that this is going to be a burden, so.
We've done this pretty much every year as far as I am aware of.
That's because the, nobody works on the 23rd, the Thursday and the Friday before the Monday.
Right.
So this is what we've done in previous years on that, so.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I move that we approve the adjusting of the Commissioners Court's schedule regarding the Auditor's Office item deadline for invoices and line item transfers as follows. November 17th, 2023 at noon for the November 28, 2023 Commissioners Court and June 18th, or June 28th, 2024 at noon for the July 9th, 2024 Commissioners Court.
Second. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to adjust the Commissioners Court's schedule as stated, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Good, motion carries five zero. Next, item nine, discuss and take appropriate action to approve adjusting the Commissioners Court Agenda Items Deadlines for Monday, November the 20th, 2023 at noon for the November 28, 2023 Commissioners Court, Friday, December 15, 2023 at noon for the December 22nd, 2023 Commissioners Court, and Monday, July 1st, 2024 at noon for the July 9th, 2024 Commissioners Court. Any discussion?
I move that we adjust the Agenda Item Deadlines as listed.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to adjust the Agenda Item Deadlines as stated, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Item number 10, discuss and consider for approval the use of the Historical Courthouse for approximately 25 people by the Eastwood Movie LLC as follows. Saturday, November 25th, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This includes the first floor hallways, the County Judge's Office, the second floor courtroom and the west entrance and portion of the courthouse square. I have put that on here because the Eastwood Movie Company, through a guy named Billy McAdams Jr., has come to me, is producing a movie that deals with the dangers of texting on a telephone. It's the number two calls of death in Texas on crashes right behind speeding. It's even more dangerous than DWI because you lose total attention when you're texting on the deal. And then it's kind of a religious God deal about forgiving people. Some people are killed and it has, and Kevin Sorbo, you know the guy from Hercules? Is going to star in it along with somebody. And so they've asked that they could use that portion of the, of the courthouse on, and for that time period. I talked to the sheriff about it and during that time up there, I told him that it would be $50 an hour, sheriff, is that right?
Yes.
And you would open and close at that time for them to use it? Is that right? If they would pay your deputies? Would one deputy be enough for those? It's not going to be open to the general public. He said, "That's why I put the 20, 25 people with the actors." Some of the actors are, I think Chief Galvan and some Granbury Police Officers are going to be in the movie, so.
They'll be occupied with what they're doing, but I'll post it and we'll have one deputy at that $50 an hour that should be able to handle it. Because we're still going to have to open it up and close it up, so.
Right, right. So that's, that's what I'll tell them, so.
So I'll get it posted for all, any and all law enforcement in Hood County to have that opportunity.
Okay. So.
As we talked about last court about the hold harmless, I mentioned this to Matt. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. Did we need to have a, the hold harmless? And do you want to come up, Matt, and give your opinion on what your suggestion was? I think it's a good idea.
Well, this sort of gets into another topic, but last time we had that conversation and I drafted a proposal for room usage just generally through the county. I emailed it to everybody and then it didn't get on the agenda today. I guess there's still some stuff to work through. But my thought on a movie company, they're not a nonprofit. I would think that they could afford to have an insurance policy that names us as a co-insured as well as pay the security fee. So I would just put your, maybe a million dollars. That's not really that expensive, but to name us as a co-insured and pay the security fee, other than that, I would be fine with, you know, the motion.
So do we need to table this until we can be assured we have a liability policy?
Well, just to prove a contingent on, the contingent on a, an insurance policy naming us co-insured and paying the sheriff's security fee.
And who's responsible for making sure that that happens?
Well, I guess if they don't have that done, then they don't get to use it.
I mean, who do they give it to?
They give it to you. They have to get it approved by you.
Sure.
They give you the policy?
That's fine, I'll do that.
Okay. So do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the use of the Historical Courthouse for approximately 25 people by Eastwood Movie LLC as follows. Saturday, November 25th, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This includes the first floor hallways, the County Judge's Office, the second floor courtroom and the west entrance and portion of the courthouse square. And to the use the grounds at the south entrance and such outside portion of the courthouse square on Wednesday, November 29th, from 2023, November 29th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Contingent on naming Hood County as a named insured on a $1 million liability policy to be given to the county attorney.
And pay the $50.
And pay the $50. It's an hour for security to the Sheriff's Department.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow Eastwood Movie LLC to use the Historical Courthouse for Saturday, November the 25th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. To include what has been stated as the first floor hallways, County Judge's Office, second floor courtroom and the west entrance and portion of the courthouse square. And Matt, do you think that they still, you know, this is two different days and then there's another day for the 29th where they're just using the outside portion of the south entrance where they're just standing up there? Do they still need a million dollars insurance for that?
I mean, I think you could get one policy that would cover everything and it shouldn't be any difference.
Okay. All right, condition upon a million dollar policy made payable to the Hood County and conditioned upon approval by the Hood County Attorney and condition upon paying $50 per hour for a sheriff's deputy to provide security. Second by Commissioner Andrews.
Eagle.
Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Okay, item number 11, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the County Judge to sign the annual renewal contracts with Charter, Spectrum, Internet and AT&amp;T Internet. Owen.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. So before you is, actually, it's every three years, not annually. We had a little hiccup in the agenda item there. So if there are any motions made from this, if you will, just please rectify that, that this is three years for both of them. So what this is, is this is not a binding agreement that tells us for three years we are stuck with them at a certain price. This just lays out our monthly prices that we're going to pay. These prices can adjust based on if we cancel services, add services, adjust services, anything like that. So essentially, it's just setting the rate that we pay monthly to both of these companies. AT&amp;T has gone up by $50 a month. We've doubled the speed since we've kind of moved to a little bit more on the software as a service, which means that we're not hitting stuff internally, we're hitting locally. So we definitely want a little bit more speeds there. For Spectrum, our contracts for our major sites, prices have not changed for all of our smaller satellite sites, which are like Annex Two, Animal Control, stuff where any of our major infrastructure is not housed, they've actually gone down $50 a month. So essentially, with these in place, we should see a net decrease in our total expenditures for county network operations.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Matt reviewed the contracts?
Yes, Matt has reviewed both the contracts. There's really not a whole lot of verbiage in there, like I said, because we don't really get bound into staying it for the whole three years, so. But both contracts were looked at by Matt.
Okay, so is that, I mean, this is a procedural question. The, the agenda states to sign the annual renewal and that's not what we're signing, so.
No, it's a third, it's done every three years and that's what I mentioned when I first came up here.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just talking about what's on the agenda versus, I mean, is that, is that okay?
Fine, it's me. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve and allow the County Judge to sign the annual renewal contracts and interlocal agreements approved by the County Attorney under the consent of, whoops, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'll back up one. I'll revoke, pull that, discuss, I will move that we allow the County Judge to sign the annual renewal contracts with Charter and Spectrum Internet and AT&amp;T Internet.
Three-year. You need to, can you restate your motion, please?
Without the annual.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. So these, this is a three-year term on these prices.
Three, yeah, because it's not listed that way, okay. Yes, I'd.
Would you restate your motion, please?
She wants you to restate your motion.
All right, restating it. Allow the County Judge to sign the annual renewal contracts with Charter, Spectrum Internet and AT&amp;T Internet for the three-year period.
Does that get it?
It's not annual, it's a three-year, so it is not annual. With whatever triannual or whatever it may be.
Just replace the word annual with three-year and.
Or, are we going?
Can we skip it altogether? Just, I mean, it's the term of the contract. I don't know if it's necessarily necessary to specify it just to sign a renewal contract.
How about just to sign the renewal contract?
Yes.
With Charter as approved by County Attorney Matt Mills?
Yes.
Is that it? Second by.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Take a break real quick while Dave's gone.
Huh?
Take a break real quick? I could use one. We don't have a long break to go, but.
No break, you gotta just suck it up.
Suck it up, all right.
Okay, we'll take a break. Let's take a break till 11 o'clock, okay? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the record. It's 1:00 and the next item is to discuss and take appropriate action to allow the County Judge to sign renewal contracts and interlocal agreements approved by the County Attorney under the consent agenda. Go ahead and explain what this is.
Yes, I think it was last court Becky brought up the idea of placing renewal, contract renewals and interlocals on the consent agenda rather than the regular agenda to help, help speed things up. And I think this just would allow Brenda the, the opportunity to do that. And of course, those things can be pulled off and discussed whenever y'all wish.
Does everybody understand what we're talking about here? This is only, these renewal contracts are just standard deals that come up here that we can put on the consent agenda after Glenn and Matt Mills have looked at them and said that they're all right and we just can put them under the consent agenda. Any other discussion or comment about this?
I'd rather them stay on the miscellaneous agenda. Gives the public an opportunity to hear the discussion and ask questions, just like the one above. There were some anomalies on the contract that needed to be corrected as far as, you know, the three-year versus annual. And if I've learned anything from dealing with contracts in the business world, and yes, there I go again, Judge, talking about my business experience. A contract out of sight, is out of sight, out of mind. We need to watch every dollar and ask questions. We owe that to the taxpayers. We can spend a few minutes a month being good stewards of. We can spend a few minutes a month being good stewards of our taxpayers' money, so I, I would suggest that we leave them on.
Any other discussion or comment?
Well, we have the right, if it's on the consent agenda, to bring it up before we approve the consent agenda. So I will make a motion to allow the county judge to sign annual renewal contracts and interlocal agreements approved by the county attorney and purchasing director Glenn Tillman under, placing them under the consent agenda.
Here, second. I second the motion.
Good for you.
Okay, I second the motion. And like, any further discussion is, is like we said, if there's any question about the contract, you can always say that I would approve the contract, I'd like to remove a certain contract from the consent agenda and talk about it. If it's not, if it's just some sort of renewal deal that doesn't need any explanation, why take up the time? So that's my comment on it. So, any other discussion or comment? Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, say nay.
Nay.
Nay too? Okay. So the nays have it. Three nays to two ayes, okay? All right, 13 we've taken care of. Item number 14. Discuss and take appropriate action to donate 18 older computers removed from county offices to Forward Training Center for use in citizens' training. This will replace the existing computer equipment dated from 2008. IT department will completely clean the systems and hard drives prior to releasing the computers to Forward Training. Okay, Commissioner?
Last week, we had a meeting regarding the ARPA funds, and one of the requests for Forward Training Center was to replace their older computer systems that they used to, for initial training for the people who come there to learn how to use computers. And under Texas Local Government Code 263-152, Commissioner's Court of a County may dispose the property by donating it to civic or charitable organizations located in the county if the Commissioner's Court determines that. Item B, the donation serves a public purpose, and the organization will provide the county with adequate consideration, such as relieving the county of transportation, disposal expense, and related property. And in talking with Mr. Tillman, typically when we sell, you know, computers at the auction, after we pay the 7.5% fee for each one, we might generate $15 per unit, which would, in this case, for the 18, might generate $270. I can, you know, Forward Training Center will be able to do a whole lot more value and good with these 18 than that $270 will. So I move that we donate those 18 older computers that have already been removed from county offices, donate those to Forward Training Center for use in citizens' training for the citizens of Hood County.
Second. Any discussion?
I mean, I think this is a good idea, and it's a good solution to help the Forward Training Center, because like they said, if, if Windows upgrades one more time, the computers that they have are boat anchors. So, but I do have, you know, looking at the statute, I just want to be sure that we're clear that in the statute, it says that the organization will provide the county with adequate considerations, such as relieving the county of transportation or disposal expenses, and recognize that it'll be, this isn't at no cost to the county. There's, it's about three to four hours of talking to IT, three to four hours of county employee time per computer, so that's 72 hours at a cost of $1,800. That doesn't include the add-on of benefits, that's just their straight salary. When they're auctions, they're, they're stripped down with no hard drive, so it's very little time. My other concern is that we have a release letter drawn up, Matt, if you're listening back there, that we have a release letter drawn up that releases Hood County from liability and future updates, i.e. the donation is as-is, assumes that they have compatible peripheral equipment, keyboards, monitors, et cetera, assumes that they will purchase Windows licensing on their own, and that the computers will be delivered, will be delivered as time permits. So, you know, this is work that our IT department is going to undertake, 72 hours worth of work that they will undertake, but it needs to be fit in as time permits while they're working on the county, the work they have to do with the county. But in general, I think this is.
In discussions with IT, you know, they can clean, if I'm not mistaken, four units at a time. Yes, it takes about two and a half hours to, for the system to clean itself, and only about 30 seconds to set the computers up and press the button. So, you know, that's all we're talking about, is the initial setup, about 30 seconds or so, set them up, and the systems will actually go through and clean themselves, and then IT will verify that the, both the system, the RAM and the hard drives are clean.
Owen, come up here and just explain how much time it's actually going to take.
All right, so to keep it simple, that two to three-hour window is accurate, however, that's purely on how long it actually takes. The actual involvement from the tech is very little. So the actual steps to do it are, we have to locate the hard drive or a hard drive that's going to be used, pop it in and let that clear, which is what takes about two hours, but that takes about 15 seconds for the tech to initiate. After that, they can walk away and the computer does the rest. We'll pop the drive back in, cut another couple of minutes maybe max, and even assuming that we, if we were to load a copy of, you know, unlicensed Windows on there so that it's as ready as it can be for them, that's maybe being generous, 20 minutes, because even that's mostly just continuously hitting next until it does what it needs to do and you just leave it alone. So our actual tech involvement time is pretty low, but the two to three hours is correct on how long it actually takes for everything to be done.
But it only involves about 20 minutes per machine of tech time.
Correct, and like I said, and that's even under the assumption that we're going to be loading an unlicensed version of Windows on there. If we're not, it's even less.
Okay, so that's not the information I got from your department, so you might want to check on that.
Already spoken to him, and I actually sent you an email this morning clarifying that.
All right, so with that, there's the, the recommendation on the release from liability. Matt, do you have any opinions on that? I know.
I will. I will, whatever you want to do.
Well, I just know that at prior company, we used to do this, and then there was some problems, so we were, you know, just want to be sure that we are released from any liability as required to maintain those machines, or any virus that wasn't detected during the clean process. I mean, there's several things that could happen, so we just need to be sure that we have no liability.
Okay, I mean, as a practical matter, do I, I mean, if I draft something pursuant to your concerns, does that need to come back to court next time, or is that just done, the judge signs it, or what?
Just, no, just draft up something that says it's, you accept them and as-is, releasing the county from any and all liability, right?
Okay, and then just.
That satisfy you?
And then what about the purchase of Windows licensing?
You tell me what to write, I mean, I mean, I can put that, whatever.
I mean, I've listed them here.
Yeah, I, I have, I have your email, so I mean, if you want to make a motion pursuant to that email, I can just put those bullet points in an email and review it and send it over.
Okay. I mean, those are my comments, sorry. I don't know if anyone else has comments.
What about installing the Windows in a thing? We're not furnishing that, do we?
No, like I said, that would be really in just a, we're just trying to be as helpful as we can, because Windows, you know, Microsoft does allow you just to download Windows, it's an unlicensed version, so they will still be, you know, in charge of actually getting the license, paying for the license, and applying the license, but it is a step that we can look at, but it's not necessary. They have, they do have their own IT staff that will be able to take in these machines and process them as they need.
Does that satisfy you, Ms. Commissioner?
Commissioner Samuelson?
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone else has any comments, but, I mean.
You're the only one that brought them, I'm just saying, does that address here?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or discussions, questions?
So I'll make the motion then to, oh, sorry.
Have one.
Sorry, that was, you're right, we were during, so do you need to amend your motion to include the liability?
Motion stands.
What was it?
Didn't include any of the lease from liability.
To denote, donate 18 older computers removed from county offices to the Forward Training Center for use in citizens' training, and this will replace the, you know, existing equipment that they have that's dated from 2008. IT department will completely clean the systems and hard drives prior to release to Forward Training Center, and Forward Training Center will be required to sign a release that will be created by the county attorney's office for no liability to the county.
Second. Any further discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Next, item number 15. Discuss and take appropriate action out of the county judge to sign the maintenance agreement for Net Data. This agreement covers the jail and development as well as physical server maintenance, intent is to allow proper transition of reporting from Net Data to Spillman without major impact to jail's ability to satisfy monthly reports. This sum will come out of contract services. Again, Owen.
Again, good morning, everybody. So I've approached most of you, Dave, unfortunately, I didn't have time, but I did shoot you an email trying to kind of fill you in a little bit. So essentially, what I'm trying to do is get us to renew our contract with Net Data for one more year. This covers the jail, development, and also covers, covers the physical server on the maintenance. For jail, it's mainly just trying to ensure that we can get these reports created in such a way that, you know, everything is accurate, everything is right, and everything is up to the standards that the Texas Commission on Jail Standards request. This extra time will give us a lot more time to go through and make sure that these reports 100% are accurate and are meeting the needs that are needed. For development, we're still looking at trying to get Clint moved off of Net Data and into a new software. I do have open communications with the software provider, and I'm about to give him the last little bit of info that he needs in order to see if it's something that they can do. This will give us time to go through, extract that data, move it over, do the same thing, kind of test it, make sure everything's right, before we fully migrate off the platform. Last piece is the physical maintenance. Even if we weren't looking at these other two items, we'd still need to keep the maintenance on the server just due to the historical data that is on there. Between this year, we plan on taking that data off of the AS400 system and integrating it into a web service that will allow users to log in through a web browser and view that historical data instead of, you know, going directly to the server. So that does, that is something that we can eventually cut out, but, you know, it will be a cost that does come up for a couple of years until, you know, we're fairly certain that we've gone past retention windows, that we've got everything off, that we truly have everything off that we need, and that we're good to just abandon that server.
Any questions or comments? And you've got the funds in your department to go ahead and pay for this, is that correct?
Correct. Since we've done our migration from Tyler, Bill Wilder, who's our third-party programmer, handled most of the data transfer from Net Data to Tyler. Now that we're not doing that this year, and really, the only migration we've got is for Clint, it's going to open up quite a bit, which should be covered, should cover everything that we need for Net Data.
Owen mentioned, was looking through his budget to find maybe some obsolete items that could be discontinued.
Yeah, if the cost, if the costs don't sum up, I will be going through and removing some tools that are really, for lack of a better word, just make my life a little bit easier. I can still do my job, they just kind of made it a little bit easier, and some of these tools are tools that I can create myself in my free time and just save us the expense in general, so even if I do cut them, if I can do something with it and come back, then when I use it again, we don't need to pay for it, so.
Thank you for being a good steward.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to allow the county judge to sign the maintenance agreement for Net Data. This agreement covers the jail and development as well as physical server maintenance. The intent is to allow proper transition of reporting from Net Data to Spillman without major impact to jail's ability to satisfy monthly reports. This will come out of contract services.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow the county judge to sign the maintenance contract for Net Data. This agreement covers the jail and development as well as physical service maintenance, to allow proper transition from Net Data to Spillman without major impact to jail's ability to satisfy monthly reports. The sum will come out of contract services. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? Just one, and the amount is $79,750.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item. Thank you, Owen. Discuss and consider for approve the Hood County manager compensation guidelines. Melissa Welburn.
Good morning.
beloved matrix.
I believe everyone.
Well, I think we need Kiana Ruse to come down here and explain the matrix to us, you know?
Could be, could be. Everyone received a copy of a draft of the guidelines. I do have the same copy here with just one revision. If I may approach and hand everyone a copy. We can go through each paragraph if you'd like, take your time, read over it. You can see that's just a minor change there under number two, compensation, second bullet.
I think that's what we've been kind of discussing about, and what we kind of all come to say that this is with court approval on each time, so. Anybody have any questions or comment to Ms. Welburn? If not, do I hear a motion?
How?
Well, go ahead.
How will the, what's your expectation for the managers when they, the third bullet down, that they need to provide the unique, relevant experience? Do they provide that to you? Do they attach it to the court agenda? How do you expect, how are you anticipating that?
It can be provided to me, and then I can provide it to the court. Usually, I rely heavily on their expertise as far as what they need in their office, and so I go off of their recommendations.
Okay, so you're, okay, so they will provide it to you before court?
And I can provide it to the court, yes, if that's the process you want to adopt moving forward.
Yeah, and this really doesn't change a whole lot in, in what was already in place in that we didn't hire anybody at step one through five, so it's, you know, we've eliminated the unnecessary stuff that nobody was using, and it's basically, the new salary matrix is basically starting at the old step six or whatever, so that this was more or less a continuation. I don't think I was very clear about that whenever we talked about this before, but it's more or less continuation of what we were doing before, so. But yeah, you needed some direction on, something on paper that says this is the policy and how we're going forward with that. That's, yeah, I'll stop there.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Hood County Commissioner's Court policy and procedures for compensation guidelines as presented.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to adopt the Hood County Commissioner's Court policies and procedures as presented, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welburn, good job. Okay, we're now down to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as reported.
Second. A motion made. There are motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the consent agenda as reported, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, this brings us down to item number nine. Business to be defended, Mr. Donald Lenny, no road items, right? So, good, we got development with Mr. Clint Head. Discuss and consider section 9D of the Hood County On-Site Sewage Facility Order, TCEQ's recommendation, and decide how to correct the section to enforce the section. Okay?
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Matt was in contact with TCEQ, and their recommendation was to redo the order. We know that's a timely process, and I've handed out my recommendation for an amendment, and if y'all would like to make... Court would vote on to use that amendment and start the revision process, that would be great, but I'd need y'all to make a motion to use this in lieu of until we get that revision changed, because it's holding up some sewer permits.
Mills, is that what you recommend to keep us out of hot water with TCEQ and the Rapids River Authority?
Well, we've gone through this via email a few times, and I'm still a little bit uncertain why this hasn't been a problem for the last nine years, if it's been in the order all that time. But, it's... I mean, if you wanted to apply it strictly over the last nine years, it would have been problematic for the last nine years. So, we asked TCEQ, and they unfortunately told us that we should go through the whole thing again, which means notices in the paper and public hearing and all that stuff. I mean, that would be the cleanest, best way in theory moving forward, and then to just basically grant a variance for the stuff that's pending right now, which is essentially what we've been doing for nine years anyway, as I read it.
Sure, I understand it then. So, we're gonna... If we adopt this variance here, we still have to go through with what TCEQ recommends? Putting the notices in the paper and all?
Well, when you amend the OSSF order, you... I mean, it's the whole process that we already did. We're doing that whole thing again. So, we got to send it down there, get their approval, we got to have the public hearing, we got to have newspaper notice, all that stuff has got to be done again, just to clarify this item. But, I mean, for years going on to the future, that would be the best way to have a clean copy that we all go by. So, I guess that's what we can do. But, I mean, I would be in favor of what Clint's proposing, just to do for right now, just to say, look, this will essentially be a variance that we can grant for pending stuff, that we... That is in line with what we've been doing for the last nine years anyway.
Just continuing the same behavior that we've been doing for the last nine years, we're just putting it in writing, or stating it in court.
Right, that'd be my take, yes.
Okay. I think that's a great solution.
This is actually more stringent than the state, but it keeps up some of the good graces of the BRA, because they have a 75-foot setback instead of a 50, which is what the state requires.
Thank you for working on this, Clint, and bringing it up and getting it worked out.
Yeah, and I think that...
What would a motion look like? To just... That we're gonna... We're gonna start the process over again as far as making this little revision here, and then just consider variance on a case-by-case basis with the pending thing... Pending issues that we've got in the county right now, or...
Well, I mean, maybe to simplify further, just the motion would be to adopt the verbiage that Clint proposed for TCEQ's purposes, and to have that as a working variance for stuff, so that we're not bringing every single thing to court. I think that'd be simpler on you, because that's what we've been doing for nine years anyway.
Second.
You're giving me new power that I don't have.
Then you make the motion. You just...
So, I mean, I'll make that motion, I'll... That we accept the ver... Accept the language as proposed to start the process over again. TCE?
Excuse me. We did have a speaker that signed up for this, so as a point of error, I guess we got to let her speak before you make your motion.
Okay, all right.
I have two speakers.
No problem.
Do we not have more?
Hannah Brown, 2A.
If it's not on miscellaneous, you're just not paying attention. Since we're gonna have to resubmit all this, I would like to... And make these changes, I would like you to make those changes that I suggested before we submitted it as is, to change every homeowner to homesteader, to make it more clear. Do you not remember?
That's not on this section, that's on a different section.
But you're sending the whole thing and starting all over. We're gonna have another public meeting. You're... If you're gonna make changes... You're gonna make changes in the document, why can't you make the changes I suggested in the document? Are we not sending the whole thing back?
Homeowner is the person we go after if they have a violation. We can't go after a renter, we got to go after the property owner. So, I don't see the reason to changing it to homesteader unless they're the owner.
In case they're doing it themselves.
You're gonna have to step up to the mic, Ms. Brown.
Maintaining it yourself, the maintaining part of this, is this...
They have to be the owner to maintain it themselves.
Yeah, it has to be their...
That's by law.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to be their home with...
I know, but in the document, it... Sometimes it says homeowner, sometimes it says homesteader. Y'all made a big deal about not sending it back to change that part for me, but you're gonna send it back anyway, so let's make that clear, that the homesteader has to do this, the homesteader has to report to the county. Because the homeowner... The homeowner is not necessarily the homesteader. The homeowner can be renting that property out. So, the verbiage in the document has both.
But what would be the definition of a homesteader? Is that somebody that's filed a homestead exemption with the county? Because there's some time requirements, there's some lag on that, which would mean that everybody would have to have a contract initially when they buy that home and before that homestead comes in, and that seems burdensome. I think what you're looking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misunderstanding, what you're wanting here is to make sure that that person lives in that home, that homeowner is living there.
Yes, the homeowner has to be... Has to have that home homesteaded, according to this, right?
I think...
The homesteader has to... It has to be homesteaded, and they have to live in it, and they have to prove that, and that seems burdensome to me for environmental, too, to check and see if the person who turns that in every... Is it every three months, four months?
Four months.
If they turn it in every four months, she's gonna have to check the records to see if the person who's doing the work and filling out the paperwork is actually the person that homesteads it and lives there. So, it's all a little vague. I think...
So, we're straying a little bit off of the agenda, so I want to be sure Matt's okay with this discussion, for me to clarify this. I mean, this is 9D, and what she's talking about is something else, but...
But it's part of that document, what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I just want to be sure, before I answer your question, that we're not straying too far off of the topic on the agenda.
Well, I mean, technically, it's a little different, I mean, than the agenda item. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, this might be more appropriate as a citizen comment type thing, but...
Okay.
I mean, it's already been...
So, can I answer her... Can I offer some comments on the section she's talking about or not?
I mean, I feel like we're off-topic slightly, but, I mean, it's been duly noted, we'll be in touch. She can email the concerns, I would just go from there, I think.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comment or questions? Okay, Commissioner Eagle?
All right, let me give this a shot. So, I'm gonna make a motion to begin the process of filing the notice changes in section 9D of the Hood County On-Site Sewage Facility Order as presented with TCEQ, and also to allow the development department to proceed with current issues, variances as we've been doing. Is that close enough?
Second. Any comment or question to this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, next.
This next item, we put on the agenda because we recently changed the interlocal agreement to where we're now handling the ETJ, and Habitat for Humanity, which is currently in Rancho Brazos, is gonna be bringing forth some replats to make those lots bigger in order to fit the houses that they build, and just seeing if the court would like to waive the development fees for those replats. The environmental fees were waived before because she's always handled the sewer, so...
Well, and this is... Is that... That's yours, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, this is, you know, strictly to, you know, for, you know, to reduce the development fees, you know, for Habitat for Humanity, you know, homes that are built primarily right now in Rancho Brazos, but I would suggest that this also would be, you know, if we have to have another situation where Habitat for Humanity is building homes in other parts of the county, it would be applicable there also.
Right.
It does not need to be just to Rancho. If Habitat, you know, is, you know, building homes because of a disaster such as we had in Rancho 10 years ago, then I think it should be applicable across the board.
Right. I think that's how I worded it. I feel like it's how I worded it when I just said particularly in Rancho, because it's currently in Rancho, but just waiving the fees for them in general.
So, I move that we waive the development fees for Habitat for Humanity, you know, activities, you know, in Hood County, not just Rancho.
Second.
And motion made by Commissioner Wilson to waive the development fees for Habitat for Humanity anywhere within Hood County, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any other comment or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay, item 2C, public hearing to discuss and consider the concept plan of Sanctuary Oaks Ranch. So, at this time, at 24 minutes till 12, we're adjourned into a public hearing, and we've got a couple of people signed up to speak on this. The first is Phyllis Taylor.
Hi. I just found out that this item was on the agenda this morning, so I don't have a big speech for you guys, and I guess the whole time I've been sitting here, I've been trying to think of some compelling statement to make. But I think that what I want to convey is that this is not just a decision to allow another development to come into Hood County. It's about the ones of us have chosen to live the rural lifestyle for generations. It's about us that we rely on the water that is there, and that, I think, is our main concern, the big concern, water and roads, the infrastructure. A small concern that is not, I guess, legitimate is being able to see the stars at night because it's dark out there, but that's gonna go away, and we know it. But what I'm asking is that you table this approval until you can do a study on the aquifer and see what it's gonna... How it's gonna affect the water that we need, that we rely on, especially those of us that continue to have livestock, that we have hay, that we... We really, really need it, and, I mean, I understand that you have to have it to live, you know, your housing and things, too, but the water is what we're concerned with. And I would just ask that you look into that and you study what the effects it's gonna have on our aquifer before you approve another 200 or 300 houses to hit this area and this water source. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the second person that signed up is Richard Bold.
Hello there, good morning and thank you. I'm here to speak out against the Sanctuary Oaks Ranch development outside of Toller and to explain how these types of development are actually a drain on resources and not a beneficial source of tax revenue. I live in... Outside of Toller, inside of Toller ISD, and in 2011, I had moved to what I thought was a rural community called Salina in north Dallas, to a house built in the 1980s on acreage, and watched the uncontrolled development grow the population by 53% until 2017, when I chose to move to Toller, to another house that was built in the 1980s on acreage. Since then, I've seen several new developments go in, and the Parkview Development expanded. This has been put a strain on schools. Starting this year, the elementary school had started to use portables because they have outgrown the school that was not that long ago built already. Recently, the Toller School Board worked with a local architect to develop a long-term plan, which showed that if the population would continue to grow, then we would need to improve our current buildings and build new buildings, and that money would need to come from a bond issue, because the current taxes would not be enough, and even the maximum allowed bond that would... Could be issued would not be enough. What is needed is not more houses, but more businesses. I understand that there are special tax districts that can be used in scenarios like these developments to move the burden from the existing population to the new developments, which are causing the additional strains on the infrastructure. And most of these developments are outside the city limits of Toller and therefore under the purview of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Head.
Before I start the presentation, I'd like to address the groundwater study. That is a requirement. It's not required in the concept plan. The concept plan's the very first phase, it's very rough. We're not even reviewing drainage at this point. They go on the construction plans, they will turn in the groundwater study to the opportunity, and then the opportunity will send us a letter saying that they're okay with it. We have no control over the groundwater, that's all opportunity. As far as the other concerns, I mean, y'all know, I've just let the public know, 232 limits us. Basically, the only thing we can do is be the bumper guard, the guide on, to make sure they build the streets right and the drainage is done right. We do not have the power to deny just for... Because they're gonna block the starlights or whatever, because they're taking up the rural property. I've lived here all my life, I hate seeing it all get developed, but the law limits what we can do. Y'all have any questions? I'll start my presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I'll echo your sentiments there, right, so, you know? I think by and large, we don't want the growth, we don't want to see, you know, our way of life go away, but it... How do you tell somebody else, no, you don't get to come out here, you don't get to move in?
By law, we can't.
Personal, you know, it's a transaction there, that, yeah, there will be a water... A water study that's required to make sure...
And as far as tabling this, if you table it, it's gonna be automatically approved.
Right. Yeah.
But I'll go ahead with the presentation. The concept plan is for 247 acres that will be developed in multiple phases, and has a gross site area of 581.55 acres, out of several abstracts in Hood County. This property is located at 3820 Coleman Ranch Road in Toller, Texas. The property was located in a rural district in precinct one, and the lots proposed were to be served by well and onsite sewage facility systems. This concept plan is proposing to dedicate 42.571 acres of right-of-way with 2,746 linear feet of private streets. The smallest lot proposed is two acres net, and that means it's two acres inside the boundary that they buy. Staff has reviewed this concept plan, and all comments have been addressed.
Anything further? Any other comments or questions from anybody in the public hearing? If not, it's now 18 minutes till 12. We're gonna adjourn back into Commissioners Court at this time. Is there anything that we have to approve at this time, or this... We have to vote on the concept plan to vote to approval of it, Mr. Head?
No.
No?
Just vote on it.
Huh?
We're just voting on the approval of the concept plan.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the concept plan of Sanctuary Oaks Ranch.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the concept plan of Sanctuary Oaks Ranch. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle.
I got a comment, too, if it's all right.
All right. Any comment, questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, this is just a concept plan, they still, the, they still have to go through TC, not TCEQ, upper trinity, and the upper trinity, they will likely have to take this before their board of directors. There's two, we have two board members from Hood County, there's four counties in the upper trinity, and they, they've recently added some additional language to their regulations and this, and this Texas legislature has as well. And my comment in addition to that is, when I first went to, my first year of college, I'm from north Texas, I used to drive, I drove to Arlington, Texas from just about the Oklahoma border, and I went through Frisco, Texas, and it was four gas stations, one gas station on each corner.
Cornfields.
And some of this is inevitable and the county has limited ability to tell people they can't do what they want to with their property. Again, it's gonna have to go, they've still got a lot of hoops to jump through. This is just the concept plan, concept, so I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on that, this is not a done deal, it's just a concept or plan at the moment, and I have, I don't see anything that we can do to object to it.
No, we still gotta go through construction plans, preliminary plat, and then final plat, and of course, they gotta get their letter from the upper trinity.
Anything else, any other comment or question? If not, all those in favor to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Next item.
This next item, the Acton Annex has a wall that's failing on the east side between, next to Family Dollar store. The Family Dollar's roof drains are actually causing the problem. We need to get the prop, we have no survey on record to show us where everything is related to the property line, so this is to allow development to order the survey of that and the, what was that bill we needed to sign? FIP?
Yeah, professional service.
And for, to sign the professional service agreement to get that survey done. At a later court, we're gonna be needing to get an assessment done if the court wishes to, or if the court just wants to foot the bill for fixing the wall, but it's obvious that the roof drains from the Family Dollar caused the failure, and Family Dollar is so close to the property line that this is not something you wanna send the maintenance guys out there just to knock the wall out, or we'll have a Family Dollar in our parking lot.
It's, I, thank you, Don and Jeannie and Clint for putting the barriers up so that kids aren't walking that way, 'cause it's, I mean, there are some rubber ties that have exploded and fallen out of the wall, so the wall is not stable.
It sounded like a shotgun going off when that exploded.
Yeah, the wall is not stable at the current time, so we need to be sure we keep the public away from it.
Mr. Mills, come forward, please.
Okay, this wall is on county property, it's inside, from all indications, until we get a, an actual survey back, but from all indications where the pins are, it is in, on county property.
Okay.
Now, but county did not cause the problem, the Family Dollar, the runoff off of the Family Dollar, Dollar is what's causing the problem. What is our, the county's recourse back to them to help for them to either pay for the reconstruction of that wall or, you know, portion thereof?
That would, yeah, I mean, that would be helpful, I mean, we, we may all know that, but then it would be just, I guess, the easy first step would be reach out and say, hey, you know, can, you've been causing this problem, can you contribute X to the reconstruction, and if they don't, then I guess you can decide about a lawsuit.
Because, you know, under the drain spouts where the water's coming off the top of that building, there's at least two that are, you know, holes that are washed out this big and about that deep, literally, and, you know, so what's gonna have to happen, in my opinion, is that whole wall structure that's there now is gonna have to be removed and it's something more permanent installed, but it's still not gonna have the, we're still gonna have the problem with the water coming off of the roof of that building down on two county property.
Okay, well, I mean, those would be the steps, you know, documented, you know, video, photo, all that stuff, have the engineer verify that and then ask them to contribute X amount or rectify the problem going forward, and then if they don't do that, we can determine if we wanna file suit to make them do that.
This is something that was created by, you know, the runoff of their building, not, you know, at the county's expense, it should not be.
We've had a lot of rain the last 90 days, haven't we?
We had that one.
What if we had real rain?
Yeah.
What I need is to allow us to do the professional service agreement for the survey and since I didn't put it on here, I'll have to come back next court, or if y'all could give me permission to go ahead and get a quote for an assessment, I'll get the quote and I'll bring it back next court and get y'all to vote on the quote for the assessment.
So, you want a quote for a boundary survey?
Not, I'm actually order the boundary survey, but a quote on the assessment of the wall, which will be more, that's probably something y'all gonna pay out of capital projects or something, or maybe charge it to the adjoining property owner, I don't know.
Right, but I think, you know, we've got to, you know, get the, you know, the survey done and, you know, you know, for sure, but, you know, if I'm looking at it, you know, I'm confident that, you know, that whole wall is in home county property there.
The survey will help them when they're making the assessment, and then we'll have it for our records too.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Any comment?
I move that we authorize, you know, development to, you know, obtain the survey and, you know, cost estimates for replacement of that wall based on that survey, or we gotta go out for quotes on that, Mr. Tillman?
Right now, we just need an assessment, so we have it documented that they caused it.
And then, okay.
I'm gonna have to get a proposal for that, but I have the money in the budget for the survey, it's just not the assessment.
You're just asking for a topographical survey at this moment.
Around the wall area, because it will, we'll have to pay for that sooner or later, but if we're gonna survey, they might as well do it now so we're not paying two field crew trips, because we need to verify that that wall is 100% on us.
Any other question or comment?
What was the motion?
Do I hear a motion?
I just thought I did, but evidently, you know, okay, you've got, you know, we've gotta go get the assessment.
Yeah, to get a proposal for the assessment, which I'll bring to court and get y'all to approve out of capital projects, or if y'all wanna earmark it to potential for a lawsuit or something, I don't know.
You wanna table it for the assessment?
Well, I didn't have that on the agenda, so I just, give me permission to give the proposal for the assessment.
About that's what I said, but my motion is to, you know, give development permission to get a proposal, you know, for replacement of that wall.
Right.
Yes, and order the survey.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wilson to get a proposal on the wall and do whatever else you need to do. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I think that's all the items on here. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Or do you'd like to continue on?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, we are adjourned, thank you.